Yes, you should, sir.
Okay, thank you.
And we're live.
Five, four, three, two, one.
Roll call.
Councilmember Bowman.
Present.
Councilmember Farrelittle.
Here.
Councilmember Galambeek.
Here.
Councilmember Noakowski.
Present.
Council President Pridgen.
Here.
Our key.
Councilmember Rivera.
Present.
Councilmember Scanlon.
Present.
Councilmember Wingo.
Present.
Councilmember Wyatt.
Here.
All right, stand for the pledge. Thank you, our council chaplain, the Reverend Dr. L. Warner.
Thank you, Council President. It's a joy and a privilege today to present to some of you a friend of mine and others of you know him well, Father Ben Fiore, pastor at St. Michael's Parish here in downtown Buffalo, and also an adjunct professor at Canisius College. And I've asked him to join us together today for our prayer. Father Ben?
Thank you, Al. Let us pray. As we open this common council session, we call upon you, God of justice and peace, to fill us with the wisdom we need to understand the needs of the people we serve and to serve them with compassion and effectiveness. We also ask that you help us listen and respond to each other in our deliberations with open minds that look to channel our concerns and energies into actions that will further our collaborative work and be fruitful for our city and region. In doing this, we will advance the good ends you foresee for all of your people now and forever. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you so much, sir. We appreciate you and all that you do in our community and what you are doing in your parish. Thank you, Dr. Warner.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Councilmembers, any memorials? Councilmember Ulysses Wingo.
Thank you. We in the Maston District are asking the community to please pray for the family of Marcus Stokes. Marcus Stokes was a pillar in our community. He is a person who was civically engaged in a lot of community initiatives and activities. He will be sorely missed by my office. He was very familiar to a lot of people in the Maston District, City of Buffalo and in West New York because of the work that he was involved and engaged in. We want the family to know that we are praying with you and for you as you grieve for this very, very, very tremendous loss. The City of Buffalo will be different. Maston District meetings will be different. The Maston District stakeholders breakfasts will be different. Everything will be different because Marcus contributed so much to our community and to all of the initiatives and events that we had in Maston District. The City of Buffalo will be different because of Marcus Stokes' loss, because of his transition to go home, and we believe that he is now in the presence of his Creator. So please, Maston City of Buffalo, keep Marcus Stokes and his family and friends lifted in prayer, as well as this Maston District office and all of our staff who will miss Marcus tremendously. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any others? Councilmember Galambeek?
Thank you, Mr. President. Riverside lost resident who was active through her husband in the community and had been sick for quite some time, Marlene Gauz. Her husband Greg was jokingly referred to as the mayor of Elgus Avenue, they're my neighbors. She is going to be very, very sorely missed by her husband and her children. Also, Mary Tierney passed away. Mary was ninety-four years young, and as is typical in Buffalo, when I got to meet Mary in the late nineties, when I was at first running for office, her son was one of my first bosses at Tops. You know, it's that one degree of separation that separates all of us, it seems like, in the City of Buffalo. But she was a spunky lady. She would call me on a regular basis and I feel bad for her and for her, well, for her family that's going to sorely miss her. But, you know, as Councilmember Wingo was saying, there's certain people that make such huge changes. Mary was one of them with the involvement that she had in so many different groups.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Farrelittle?
Thank you. Just want to recognize Bruce Adams, who has lived in the Delaware District for many decades. He passed within the past couple of weeks. He was very active in the art community. His work has been in exhibitions at the Albright Knox, Birchfield Penny, Niagara University, among other places. He taught art in the in high school, also taught at Buff State College, and just very, very active in that community in Western New York, and he will be sorely missed.
Councilmember Wyatt?
Yes, Mr. President. I just want the community to pray for Tanya and Bridget Willis. They lost their mother, Eunice Odell Willis. I think of her fondly because when I was going through a tough time in my life, their family held me down. And I can say if it wasn't for that family, I would probably not be in the position I'm in today. So my heart is very heavy in the loss of Ms. Willis, but for grateful for her life. She was one of those women, you know, when you talk about Psalms thirty-one, a virtuous woman. She was that. So we want to keep the Willis family in our prayers and my condolences to Tanya and Bridget. Thank you.
All right. Any others? Councilmember Bowman?
Thank you, Council President. The Lovejoy District, we lost two great community members, and as Councilmember Wingo said, it's going to be different for us as well. In our community, we lost George McMillan, who, you know, he was a great singer. He sang chorus, male chorus at Bethel AME here in Buffalo. But the thing I'll remember most about George is he was always trying to be active in the community, even when he was in his scooter. He was looking for ways and calling the office and seeing how he could be helpful. Always willing to chip in. He was the chaplain for our Sumner Brinkman Block Club. His wife Martha was the president, so very community-oriented family. You know, we send our thoughts to Martha. And we also lost Robert Bradbury, who was another guy. He was, you know, in the Kaiser Town Friends Association with his wife Susan. Very community-active. They built a community garden this past summer at Houghton Park. So, you know, his work will last on through that, and he was a great guy, volunteer firefighter and electrician. So we'll miss them sorely. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others? And on Marcus, he had just done a food boxes for our senior drive-through. Yeah, Maston will miss him. The city will miss him. He'd always give me a bear hug when you see him. I see Councilmember Wingo shaking its head. Even during COVID, he had on his mask. He was going to give you a hug. And when, you know, a man embraces another man like that and shows, you know, respect and love for their fellow man, it is a tragedy that they have gone on, that that all of them have gone on. But Marcus, who I knew, knew very well, and just found out when Councilmember Wingo spoke about it, that's tough. That's tough. So thank you for sharing that, Councilmember Wingo, with us and many in the community who didn't know. So, thank you. Hearing no others, we'll pause in this chamber for all of those named called and those who have given their life for our country and the freedom of others since our last meeting. We pause for a moment of silence. Thank you all. On a motion by Mr. Rivera, second by Mr. Scanlon, the minutes of stated meeting held on March second, twenty twenty-one are approved. Councilmembers, you have the late files before you. Are there any objections to any of the late files that are before you? Seeing no objections, we will hear the entire agenda, as is before us, not taking away your right to pause the meeting if you need to review an item that is before us. Majority Leader, are we going from the top?
We're going from the top. Thank you. Yes, sir.
All right, from the top.
Item number one, Mayor at a state travel, March eighth to March tenth.
Motion to receive and file.
Second by Councilmember Wyatt.
Item number two, declaration of need.
Mr. Chair, this item is open. This is a declaration of necessity coming from the mayor's office. We received this item approximately a half hour ago. I had requested that both the Controller's Office and the mayor's office be present to discuss this item since it was a late file. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. We'll start with Commissioner Estridge and then go to Deputy Commissioner Dow.
Good afternoon, everyone. We had received a letter late last week from the Buffalo Fiscal Stability Authority, and they had done a financial analysis on our upcoming bond sale, which is approximately sixty-four million dollars. That is larger than our normal bond sales. Usually our bond sales are between twenty and maybe twenty-three million dollars. And so they did the analysis between what it would cost for them to borrow money versus what it would cost for the city to borrow money. They are grade above us because they do intercept our sales tax, so they have a steady stream of money. But they do have a higher bond rating. And they had done their financial analysis, and with their analysis, which they had sent the letter to the mayor, the controller and council president, they identified that the savings to the city would be approximately, on our present value, would approximately be six hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars over the life of the ten-year excuse me, eleven-year bond. So that would come to the city as a savings of approximately sixty-six thousand dollars a year. So we thought we were looking for any kind of financial assistance, and we'll use any kind of assistance that could help save some money. So that's why we're asking for this declaration of need.
Thank you. We'll hear from Mr. Dow before. There's a couple of questions that we have, but I want to hear from both sides first. Deputy Control?
Yes, good afternoon, everyone. As Commissioner Estridge stated, the administration did submit a declaration of need, and they get an analysis from the BFSA in regards to would it be better for the BFSA to issue for the capital bonds, meaning it occur in April or the City of Buffalo? The controller did receive the letter and review declaration of need, and she requested the city's financial advisor to do their own analysis. The numbers we received from the BFSA was based off their financial advisor. So the controller requested the City of Buffalo's financial advisors to do the same financial analysis. And I believe this is the document right here. And based off the eleven-year bond that we're looking at, the city, for sixty-four million dollars that we're looking to borrow, we did show like a savings of around four hundred forty thousand over eleven years compared to the analysis done by the BFSA. They had a savings, I believe, of six hundred sixty-six thousand over eleven years. So annually, that's a sixty-one thousand a year savings for the city based off the BFSA analysis, and then based off the City of Buffalo's savings around, I think, forty million. So overall, it's a difference of twenty-one, I mean, twenty-one thousand dollars a year over eleven years in savings. The controller just wanted to do her due diligence to request the city's financial advisor to do the same analysis that the BFSA financial advisor did, just so we could compare to make sure the numbers are accurate, see how close of a difference, if the two different financial advisors review the true savings to the City of Buffalo.
To Commissioner Estridge, I know that there is a note in here that this would not extend the control board, and I'm hearing different things. So I'm hearing that indeed, the control board would have to still be responsible for this loan. And that if we do not do this action today, that it is possible that the control board would be paid back what we or their, whatever they have borrowed for us within the next at least four years.
So
As of right now, legislation keeps the control board till twenty thirty-seven.
So the control board could not go away before twenty thirty-seven?
That's what the legislation reads now.
So it could be changed?
It could be changed.
But if we, so, once the city has paid off, or not, once the bonds that currently the control board have put out for the city, once those are done, is there anything that would stop the State of New York from declaring that the control board could be done, could be over?
I do not know what their qualifications would be. I would have to reach out to the state on that.
So my fear is we could possibly see the control board disappear in the next four years or five years, and that if we do this item for a, and I'm not sure whose number is correct or how, why these numbers are not the same, that that could cause the control board to then be there for eleven more years. Because they, they, they would be the borrowing entity.
They would. Yes, they would. I don't know if that would cause them to stay in effect, or they would just transition those payments to a state agency. I could not answer that. That would be a legal question.
And I know Ms. Gordon is just getting this, so I don't want to put her on the spot if you don't have the answer to this, but I think that that's very important to know whether we could have a four-year control board or an eleven-year control board for a forty thousand or a sixty thousand dollar savings, or how we got to these numbers. I have other questions, but I'll wait until see if any of my colleagues have questions. Councilmember Scanlon?
Present. Thank you, Council President. I don't know if this is a question for Commissioner Estridge or possibly Corporation Council, but you referenced the, I guess, elimination of the control board or the fiscal stability board at some point. And is that typically, if that were to take place, would it be something the state steps in and does, or is something the city requests and tries to move that forward?
I believe the city would request it to the legislature, to the governor, and they would have to approve it.
And Commissioner, what's the time sensitivity on this item?
The control board is meeting next Thursday, and they would need to move, they would have to go to their board and have it approved also by next Thursday. Because we have some bands, excuse me, the bands are coming up, and the timing moving backwards to get those sold again is early April. So there's a time concern.
Thank you.
Councilmember Wyatt?
Thank you, Mr. President. Donna, what are we paying the control board annually for salaries?
We budget approximately a million, but they end up using probably like seven hundred and fifty thousand a year.
So
And that's their salaries and overhead.
So although we're talking about a savings on the interest, if the control board extended, we're also talking about extending these salaries. So the salaries
Wouldn't necessarily extend it. You're talking about eliminating them or, you know, reducing it earlier time.
But I guess this is the problem that we constantly have, is that for such an important issue like this, we get it at the last minute. And we don't have any way of doing our own verification or anything. We just have to go by what you all tell us. And that's unfortunate because it happens time after time. And you can't tell me that this is just happens when the council meeting happens, that we get a late file, that we don't have the time to do any type of analysis or do any type of verification. It's really unfair. It's really unfair. And I know I got a call from you about this item, but I didn't get a call yesterday. I didn't get a call last week. I got it today. And even Majority Leader said he just got this fifteen minutes ago, one forty-five. How can this be so critical? And how can this be so important? And how can this be so necessary? And we get it the last minute? So I'm definitely not inclined to go along with it.
It would be a good thing to be able to save the city some money. You got, you have the option of voting for it. We could get more information, and you could look at it later.
Yeah, I'm not disputing any of that, but if he had this vision about this being so helpful to the city, why didn't we have it sooner? Now, you said they met. Well, the control board meets once a month. So was this conversation a month ago, and they talked about it, or is it something?
The letter came in at the end of last week.
Okay. I mean, did you include the Controller's Office in the conversation? I mean, we're getting all this stuff at the last minute, and we, and we're the elected body. We're supposed to approve something that we get fifteen minutes before the meeting starts? It's just so unfair. And it's, again, it goes back to the the lack of respect for the council and the transparency that we should be in the teamwork, I guess. I mean, we're co-equal branches of government, but we can have conversation about the importance of one issue versus another without it being dropped on us and telling us it's intimately important for it to happen because we're having a meeting next Thursday. Well, we have a meeting every Tuesday. Our meetings don't change because of our charter. But no one had, gave us the benefit. So, Mr. Chair, Mr. President, I'm not supportive of this because I can't verify the information as far as does it extend or anything. We need further analysis. So if you want to send it to committee, I'm all for it, but definitely to approve it today, I think it would be unfair to the council members and those who got this at the last minute that we can't get other answers on this issue. Thank you.
Well, it certainly is not due to lack of respect, and I apologize if you feel that.
Oh, well, let me say, if we, I feel it all over, and it happens too many times. And I'm not saying to you, Commissioner, I'm just saying from the administration, because you only work for them. You can't do, you can't go above and beyond what the mayor tells you to do. But I feel disrespected when we get a late file and we're not given the benefit of a conversation before it comes to the floor of the council, and we're put under pressure that we have to make a decision at the last minute for someone else to do their job. They didn't have information at the last minute. They got theirs way in advance. We don't. So that's just how I feel. Thank you, Mr. President.
I will say, and I'll come to anyone else who has a question. Commissioner reached out yesterday. We didn't have the item though until today. So she did reach out, and I then reached out to make sure we'd have the item, but we got the item today. So I think, I think what's happening, Commissioner, is that once we got a different number from the controller than from the administration, and then I'm being informed that we should be actually asking for the control board to go away after. And Commissioner, do you know when these last bonds, that when the control, when the control board would be finished as far as being paid, paying off the last bonds they borrowed for?
Well, the bonds will be paid off, the current bonds they have, in twenty twenty-five, I believe, is the last payment. The control board is still an advisory control board through twenty thirty-seven as of
Right. But I know that, as was said, that the, that the city, let's say after twenty twenty-five, if we don't go for whatever the savings is, and I think now we need a little bit more analysis based on the two different numbers, that potentially in twenty twenty-five, the city could ask our state legislature to eliminate the control board. Thus, and I know Rich Fontana used to have a fit about the million dollars that was being spent for the control board. So if, if the legislature didn't say it, then we still got a control board to twenty thirty-seven. But if they did, then we could save the city not just forty or sixty thousand. We could possibly save almost a million, a million dollars that we normally budget, and that million dollars could go back into the city's fund to provide services for people. So my concern is, and I'll see if any other colleagues, my concern is, number one, we've got two different numbers. You might say, well, that's only twenty thousand, but if we're talking about the difference between twenty thousand or forty thousand or sixty thousand and one million dollars, I side on the side of possibly getting rid of the control board in twenty twenty-five when they're no longer needed. Colleagues and anybody else? Councilmember Farrelittle?
Thank you. Just a quick question regarding the control board. First, I think it's good for the city to be able to save over sixty thousand dollars a year, but I also understand the concern about the control board. So my question is, if at some time the control board is thinking of leaving, or we request that they leave, or the legislature is considering it before twenty thirty-seven, when they're supposed to leave, is there a way that the city would be able to refinance that debt thereby preventing anything from keeping them in place? So there's just not one thing keeping them there?
Delaney, you'd have to speak about when we could refinance them, refund them.
I think, to my knowledge, is that as long as the BFSA have bonds, sold bonds on behalf of the city, it will be in existence until those bonds mature.
So could the city, could they, would the city be able to refinance those bonds?
To my, I'll have to confirm, have to get back to you if we can refinance and we take over. But like I said, as long as they have bonds issued on behalf of the city, they will be in existence. But just to be clear, I can get back to you just to verify if we can refinance those bonds on behalf of what the BFSA took out for us. And there's a couple of things where I could get a chance to talk real quick. The Controller, we did get analysis from the BFSA and was able to review it this past Friday. We got the declaration of need from the administration, at the same time Councilmember Pridgen received it yesterday. So it was a quick turnaround, even for our group, to get the data to review and then request our, the city's financial advisor to review it. And I know the BFSA, they had to get their numbers together also. So I don't, we don't think it was something where that definitely the controller, I don't speak for the controller, where we didn't sit on the information as we received. As we received it, that's when we did our analysis.
Is there anyone else? Councilmember Rivera?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Obviously, there are a number of issues here. Is how long is this control board going to be in existence? And I agree along the lines of asking the state legislature to amend the law, change the law, suspend the law, whatever it is. As Commissioner mentioned, our Erie County sales tax dollars are held by the fiscal control board. We pay them seven hundred thousand dollars a year. If we borrow eleven years, that's seven point seven million dollars. If we live the length of the, the control board, that's another eleven point two million dollars. If they go to two thousand thirty-seven. So we're paying almost eleven million dollars for a control board that's in existence when that money can be used for other things that are pressing right now. I don't see a reason why they should stay in existence. I think we've balanced budgets over a number of years. Yes, we're, yes, we're experiencing some difficult times right now. But hopefully we'll reset ourselves, and in the next couple of years, we can reset ourselves. But I think we should look at that, at asking our state legislature to amend, change, suspend that legislation. Do away with the control board. I asked Donna and Mr. Dow to be here because there were conflicting reviews. I mean, the fiscal authority had their review and what they thought the savings was going to be, and then we had the Controller's Office here saying, well, I would, we would like to do a review. We'd like to, to check into this. And unfortunately, here we are at the eleventh hour, asked to approve something. And we really don't know what the consequences are going to be because we really don't know. There are a lot of questions that aren't answered regarding the control board, regarding whether or not it will elongate them or not. So those are concerns that I still have moving forward after the decision today, and I think and I agree with Councilmember Rashid Wyatt, you would like to be able to look into this. You really would. We understand the pressing need to borrow and to reduce our costs for borrowing. But we have to look at the long picture here. A short picture is we save forty thousand dollars or sixty-six thousand dollars monthly over a number of years versus the long-term gain that we have if we start working on eliminating this control board. And any reasons why they may elongate themselves, whether it's borrowing here today.
Right. And Councilmember Rivera, you said forty thousand dollars monthly. It's not, it's forty thousand dollars annually.
Annually. So Thirty thousand dollars annually and forty, or sixty-six thousand dollars annually, depending on who has the correct information.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Noakowski. Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner, did you want to respond?
No, no, I just, you know, want everyone to know that we did receive this at the, at the end of last week, and we are And we are presenting it to you and you are correct, it is at the last minute. But we did want everyone to understand, we didn't want to ignore the control board's information and their financial analysis. And we wanted to present it to you so you also were aware of what they were presenting to us.
Thank you. Commissioner, Commissioner, Councilmember Noah Kowski.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. The way I see it now is right now we're presented with information that could save the city about sixty six thousand dollars. Some are controllers saying forty six, so there's a discrepancy of twenty thousand dollars. So right now we could save money in the short term, but it could not pay off in the long term with added expenses. And the control board is going to an advisory capacity. We're spending seven hundred thousand dollars for advice. So we need to really make sure that we don't do anything to extend that. Because really the control board was put in during hard times and was making decisions that are solely on the, the behalf of the common council. We are the fiduciary of the city of Buffalo. We are elected to carry out these duties. And we need to make sure that, you know, when their existence was needed, you know, they were able to execute their duties. But now that our city is moving into more of a, a, a different fiscal position, especially with the stimulus, that we don't do anything to extend the fiscal authorities' existence. Because what people forget is, yes, it's a state authority, but the city of Buffalo taxpayers put the bill. So we need to examine all dollars and monies that fund those departments for future savings. Every time I see future savings, seven hundred thousand dollars, a million dollars, I, I think of what I can do in my district, to be honest. And that's where our dollars should be going. So I just, I don't feel comfortable voting off on this right now. I know some of my colleagues do feel the same way. So I just wanted to, to say that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Gullumbe?
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, having been on the council the longest now, I'll just share a little bit of information. I was one of the biggest critics since day one of the control board. And it was for philosophical reasons. The problem was, was that as an authority, it was not elected by anyone. It was appointed. And at one time, regardless of whether we needed them or not, it was very, very frustrating because pretty much I think it was anything that came over fifty thousand dollars was approved by the control board and not by this council. And I don't think it was the mayor at that time either. It was Mayor Mazzello. I think it was basically the control board that was pretty much running everything. So philosophically, I just have a problem with that. If somebody wants to get mad at me, they can vote against me. They can run against me. So be it. If you're angry at the control board, add an authority, and that's been my issue with authorities in general. You know, there's no one really to go after. Years ago, I went after the N F T A because they owned a lot of waterfront land and they weren't developing our waterfront land. Well, for crying out loud, they were a bus company, but there was no one to go after. And you know, that's, that's the philosophical issue that I have with the control board. And I think that, I think it was Mr. Fariletto that hit the nail on the head as well as a couple of my other colleagues. As long as there's money that is bonded, the authority stays in existence. There's this big, huge book about Robert Moses, the power giver. I think it's by Robert Caro. And that was how they eventually went after him. He controlled, he put together the authorities and they just kept borrowing so that they would stay in existence forever. So in that regard, I am uncomfortable with voting for this immediately. I would like to see the item go to committee. However, one of the other things is, is that be careful what we wish for. I think it was last year that we were, some of us were going to the control board, asking them to take a look at our finances. And the control board was sort of stepping out of the picture, which I was thankful for. Because, you know, we are the elected body, good or ill, we're the elected body. So I was very, very thankful with that. Also, I think that perhaps sometime in the future at committee, we could talk about the actual savings to the city of Buffalo with the control board. And once again, I'm not a fan of the control board. It's the philosophical reason that they are appointed and they are really not accountable to anybody. But I think that there's more to the picture than we spend seven hundred and fifty thousand to a million dollars a year. And we get no benefit from that. And I think that we should know, you know, and I would like to see the control board gone. But I think that we should all get the actual information in what would happen if the control board left. You know, let's say the first of the year, next year, what would that mean for the finances of the city of Buffalo? And it's far more complex than just the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars or a million dollars a year that we spend on them.
Thank you, sir. In response, the control board, the control board wouldn't, we couldn't ask them to leave next year because they still have outstanding debt until 2025. But there's a portion in the need that says, and maybe Commissioner or, or Deputy Controller can answer this, is item number eight. And it says, in that the financing is structured and limited to the financing of certain authorized capital costs, incidental costs of issuance. This declaration shall have no bearing on the control period as three, thirty-eight fifty-one of the act is defining. The advisory period specifically includes authority assistance for capital items. What, what is that, the meaning? Is that saying that, well, I won't try to guess. What does that mean?
That means that they can, remember when they first came into existence, they did a deficit bond for us? And that's initially how they started. This is not the deficit bond. So this does not mean they would extend past their twenty thirty-seven timeframe.
Oh, the twenty thirty-seven timeframe. Got it. So, yeah, when we talked yesterday, as, as you know, we didn't, I didn't have any of this information. I understand that the control board is meeting Thursday. I, I join now, especially with this information from the controller's office with, I don't know if it's the majority of my colleagues, if we have to call it a roll, we will. But I, I think that this needs to go to committee. I think that there's so many questions that unless somebody on this call can answer them, that we don't know. And I, I'm with Councilmember Gullumbe. I mean, I just, if for a million dollars, I'm not sure. I, I don't want to see him around for another eleven years to save, let's take the high number, to take, to save sixty thousand dollars. And you're right, Councilmember Gullumbe, they did step back. So when they were approached, they stepped back. So it's still left this council out there. I mean, let's be honest, we had at one point a controller's office that told us the sky was falling every day, every day. It was, this is the, the situation. We, we in between had then where to go? And, and several councilmembers did ask the control board, weigh in, say something, let us know where you're at. They chose to step back. So what are they doing? What do they get paid for? One million dollars. Why do we, we have to keep them right now? Because they, they have to stay active until at least twenty thirty-seven of twenty twenty-five. And then we can ask for them to be gone. I do want to thank the mayor for trying to find some savings. I got to say that, like Councilmember Fear Little said, I think all of us want to try to find some savings. I'm just not sure after looking at controller's numbers, not knowing whether we would then have a control board that we're going to leave the next generation to have to deal with for forty thousand dollars. I think that the next generation should kick our hands down the road. If we leave them where we could have left them with a million and we leave them with forty thousand dollar savings. So I'm not comfortable in voting for this today. What happens if we do not vote and we send this now to a committee for the control board to do what it needs to do? If this body decides to go for it, to approve it?
I think if you send it to committee and then it will go back to council again, depending on your answer, it would delay the control board only a few days.
Oh, so?
Because it would be their meeting, well, they have to meet the Thursday before your meeting. So they either would take a, probably a verbal vote after that.
Because they, they can call special meetings, right? Just like?
Yeah, they could do a quorum online, right?
Yeah, I would, I would say that this is not, this cake is not baked yet. And if there's a colleague that feels any other way, please let your voice be heard so that the conversation is balanced. If there's somebody who wants to move it to a vote. All right.
I just, you know, once again, you had asked before that they always look at this, the B F S A board had asked that they look at it. So I regret that it's late to you, but we did want you to have the information.
Yeah, and I think that that's kind of the, you're right, that this body did ask, and this body didn't get an answer. This body did ask the control board and has asked, what, what is the difference in borrowing? And, oh, no, we did get an answer. I think the, the answer was none, basically. And so now at Friday, the control board, I mean, yeah, they have an opinion. Wow, that's great. And like I said, when we initially talked yesterday, I thought it was different than what I'm hearing today. But control board, I think that, that Councilmember Wyatt, when he talks about respect, is really also on the control board. Because they were asked a long time ago, told us nothing. If they did analysis, you'd think if there's open communication, that they would have reached out to all of the government bodies. Councilmember Wyatt?
Mr. Chair, what, do we, are we looking for a motion to send to committee?
Send the committee, the majority leader, want to send this committee?
Motion is to send to the finance committee.
Motion is to send this to finance committee, second by Councilmember Wyatt. And I would just say to all branches of government, if you have something for finance, the earlier that you could share it with us so that we don't take up, and, and I mean, you know, it is the people's meeting. But I want to make sure that we know in advance, so we're not kicking stuff down the road. Councilmembers, any questions that you have, we can get them out there so that we get answers on Tuesday. And then make a decision on Tuesday whether this will stay in committee or whether it will be approved or voted now. All right. Next slide. Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Deputy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number three, report of sale, two forty-three, Groch.
Motion is to approve.
Second by Councilmember Gullumbe.
Mr. President?
Councilmember Gullumbe?
Yeah, I just want to thank the administration, Real Estate Office and others that helped with this. This is a neighbor who's buying a vacant lot next door to their property. And it's going to enhance, you know, the quality of life for them. And, you know, a lot of times I think we get so caught up in the big picture, I know I do at times, that we forget that it's the little things like this, it's the little constituent issues, it's the expanding your house, it's the fixing of sidewalks and so on and so forth. And this is going to make that little section of Groch Street just a little bit stronger. So I want to thank everybody that was involved with that.
Absolutely.
Councilmember Bowman?
Yes.
Councilmember Fariletto?
Yes.
Councilmember Gullumbe?
Yes.
Councilmember Noah Kowski? Council President Priggin?
Yes.
Councilmember Rivera?
Yes.
Councilmember Scanlon?
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo?
Yes.
Councilmember Wyatt?
Yes.
Item number four, report of sale, three seventeen, Care.
Defer to Councilmember from the Maston District.
This item would like to send to committee so we can get some of the plans for the building of the house.
All right. Motion is sent, second by Councilmember Wingo.
Item number five, analysis of capital bond sale, city of Buffalo, B F S A.
This is a late file?
All right, this was the item, the analysis, I would probably send that to finance also.
Motion to send to finance.
Send to finance, second by Councilmember Noah Kowski.
Item number six, fiscal year twenty nineteen to twenty twenty, audit management letter.
Motion to send to finance, items six and seven.
Second by Councilmember Gullumbe.
Item number eight, amended C O A, open data and analytics project coordinator.
Motion to send to civil service.
Second by Councilmember Fear Little.
Item number nine, change order, Cat Co, Niagara Street, Phase Three, Water Betterment.
Motion to, to items nine through, scroll up, please. Nine through seventeen.
Second by Councilmember Wingo.
Mr. President, for item number ten, can we have that be approved with conditions? And then may I just take a second to read those conditions?
Absolutely, sir. Item number ten?
Yes, yeah, that's regarding the approval for the East Side Transfer Station. And I just wanted to add some of the following conditions. This approval is limited to the consultant working with the New York State D E C to make changes to the permit for the transfer station. This item does not authorize approval to change the operation in the field without written consent of the Commissioner of Public Works. And the Commissioner of Public Works will continue to communicate with the District Councilmember's Office and area stakeholders to work toward addressing concerns when appropriate.
It's a member Bowman? I'm sorry, sir. Can you send it to Sean or Bethany so that I can get it included into?
Yes. Yep, I'll do that right now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So all of those items are approved and item number ten with the conditions that were written to the record by the District Councilmember.
Councilmember Bowman?
Yes.
Councilmember Fariletto?
Yes.
Councilmember Gullumbe?
Yes.
Councilmember Noah Kowski? Council President Priggin?
Yes.
Councilmember Rivera?
Yes.
Councilmember Scanlon?
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo?
Yes.
Councilmember Wyatt?
Yes.
Item number eighteen, appoint battalion chief.
Motion to send to civil service, items eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four.
Second by Councilmember Noah Kowski.
Item number twenty-five, dance hall license.
Motion to send legislation.
Second by President Protem Stan.
Item number twenty-six, garbage collector license, seven sixteen dumpsters, L L C.
Motion to approve items twenty-six through twenty-eight.
Second by President Protem Stan.
Councilmember Bowman?
Yes.
Councilmember Fariletto?
Yes.
Councilmember Gullumbe?
Yes.
Councilmember Noah Kowski? Council President Priggin?
Yes.
Councilmember Rivera?
Yes.
Councilmember Scanlon?
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo?
Yes.
Councilmember Wyatt?
Yes.
Item number twenty-nine, appoint consultant five.
Motion to send civil service.
Second by Councilmember Fear Little.
Item number thirty, liquor license notice, fourteen fifty-six hurdle.
Motion to receive and file.
Second by Councilmember Fear Little.
Item number thirty-one, appoint automotive inventory clerk.
Motion to send to civil service.
Second by Councilmember Gullumbe.
Item number thirty-two, fair fines and fees, safe streets initiative, P R response.
Motion to send to legislation.
Second by Councilmember Wyatt.
Item number thirty-three, Abraham Lincoln Memorial Marker Status.
Motion to receive and file.
And by Councilmember Wyatt.
Item number thirty-four, injustice in Buffalo government.
Motion to send to legislation.
Second by Councilmember Bowman.
Item number thirty-five, letter to Senators Kennedy and Ryan.
Motion to send to the Education Committee.
Second by Councilmember Bowman.
Item number thirty-six, school zone, P S one fifty-six camera request.
This is a late file, items open.
Councilmember Wyatt, you have four?
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to file this item and speak to it because it seems so there is a somewhat of a disconnect from the school board in this request. Many of us have said that we are against these school cameras because it seems like it's not, had not been rolled out correct. We've tried to assist in modifying it to make it more friendly to motorists, to residents. And people don't hear us. They don't hear the people who are suffering right now, going through a pandemic with tickets. I just got a text from a resident who's at two hundred dollars in tickets. Well, thank God they're getting the stimulus money. Their stimulus money can go to paying the tickets. I don't think that's what the stimulus money was created for, but unfortunately, in the city of Buffalo, one in third of the poorest cities in the country, we're penalizing people in the midst of a pandemic with ticketing in many cases where children were in school, weren't even in school. We put forth a resolution back in March. And I think the way we put it forth, it was going to be the least impact on residents because many of them who drive in our school zones are already recognizing that they're driving in the school zone because it's at the time when schools being, kids are arriving in school and children are leaving. But the administration continues, along with the, a member of the school board or a member of the administration of the school board, not the school board itself, continues to talk about how the administration- continues to talk about how the administration has put the school zone camera program together with fidelity. I want to ask how many residents out there would say it was put together with fidelity? When even on my district, on Bailey Avenue, there's still signage that says enforcement from seven A M. to six P M., when we know that's not true. We're misleading the public. But, we still have someone from a school board where many of our schools are in poor neighborhoods that are affected, and we forget about those people who live in those areas. My request came that they wanted to expand the time at Olmstead, which is right next to Kenfield Langfield. I wonder how those residents would feel if they're getting tickets constantly coming off of Langfield. It, it is just, it's an inconvenience. This was about the children. The council's goal, when we put it together, the majority of us was about the children, not about a dollar. So I just wanted the public to hear that we have an individual who says he's for the school board, uh, the, uh, superintendent, acting seemingly on their behalf uh, against the residents who have spoken very loudly, how they are just confounded by this program. And how it seemingly preys on poor people and poor neighborhoods. It's not what we intended it to be. And at that point, it needs to go. And I want to continue to work with others for it to be disbanded because it continues to hurt people who can be, who are, don't have the necessities or have the wherewithal to overcome a fifty dollar ticket. And it may be very little to some, but to them, it's like having a thousand dollars. Thank you, Mister President, when we can receive and file.
Alright, council member Farrelletto wants to speak.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to, uh, point out a couple things on this item because a lot of residents still call with questions about the school zone times. And what we're talking about here is, the Buffalo Public Schools requested that cameras are on sending violations to people all day, not just during pickup and drop-off time. And the only way that could happen is if the council member who represents that district where the school is approves it. So it can't happen unless the council member approves it. Um, the request, there was a request for one in my district, I am not approving that. Um, I only, I only have a voice on the ones that are in my district. But, that request was made by the Buffalo Public Schools last week, so that the cameras would be on all day. And, the, it goes to each specific council member and they will not be on all day in the Delaware district. Thank you.
Council member Wingo?
Thank you, Mister Chair. I, I do have an item coming up, right after this item. But I want to make sure that a, a few things are very, very clear. Um, there are three schools in the Maston district, performing arts school, uh, and that is over on Maston. You have, uh, school sixty-one, the author O E school, on Leroy and Greider. And then we have Bennett High School, on Main Street. Those three schools in the Maston district have cameras. The school district requested for those cameras to be on all day. I approved it. Those cameras will be on all day. Just to ensure that the public is aware, my staff has reached out to every single news outlet to let them know that the cameras will be on all day. We've also requested, uh, a graphic, some type of flyer, electronic flyer, so that we can post that on our social media pages, as well as our personal pages, to try to make sure we disseminate that information. Now, as far as some of these other cameras, uh, like the camera that is in Delaware district that, uh, councilman Farrelletto spoke, uh, about, that he's said he's going to deny. There's two cameras on Main Street in front of that school. One camera is in Delaware district. That camera faces north, I mean, south. Then there's a camera right across the street in Maston district, that camera faces north. Now, my question, uh, is, and I'm waiting to, uh, get an answer on this question, is the school is in Delaware district true enough? But because Main Street is one of those bordering streets, um, how do they reconcile the fact that if I want my camera on all day in Maston and council member Farrelletto wants his camera off in Delaware, how is that reconciled? As well as the camera over on Bailey Avenue, where one of the constituents wrote me a, an email that is coming up in the next item, regarding the crazy traffic on Bailey Avenue. No, the school is not on Bailey Avenue, but it does fall within the parameters of the school zone. And mind you, right there on the corner of Bailey and Amherst, is the Buffalo Promise Neighborhood Daycare Early Childhood Center. That also qualifies as a school zone. So, one camera is in university, the other camera is in Maston. I used to drop my children off at the Buffalo Promise Neighborhood Early Childhood Center. I personally witnessed how fast cars drive up and down Bailey. When Sister Benton was the crossing guard, I used to express my concern for her having to walk across Bailey to safely, or at least try to safely transport kids across the street and their families. And mind you, folks are dropping their children off all day and picking their children up all day. Therefore, there is a need for drivers to be cognizant of the fact that there are children and their parents walking to and from school all day. I was a substitute teacher in the Buffalo Public School system. We utilize the immediate community of the school all day. So the fact that the children are in the seats does not mean that certain children are safe because they're still coming and leaving school. And also, as relates to the times, uh, certain schools, yes, are open early, and some schools are open late. That is a fact. The schools in Maston district, those cameras will be, uh, on for an hour before and an hour after. I believe that's what the policy is. And we're gonna do everything we can to make sure that everyone knows that those cameras will be on all day. Lastly, the speed limit in the city of Buffalo is thirty miles an hour. Thirty. It's thirty on our larger streets, it's thirty on our state streets, and it's thirty on our side streets. The speed limit is thirty miles an hour. School zones are fifteen miles an hour. The cameras will not ticket you unless you're driving twenty-six miles an hour. Twenty-six. That's four miles less than the speed limit. And to suggest or to mention that the cameras are targeting, uh, impoverished, impoverished populations is ridiculous. Cause you control how fast you drive. So if you control how fast you drive, how is it that you're being targeted if the cameras don't capture your license plate unless you're going twenty-six miles an hour? The speed limit is thirty. School zones are fifteen. Also, truth, if you are driving more than fifty miles an hour, yes, if a police pulls you over, you can get a ticket and you will get points on your license. My wife works in the school. I have two young babies, ten and nine years old, in the school, right over there in the Langfield area. At this Olmstead school. I substitute taught in Buffalo Public Schools for over fifteen years. We use the entire community. This program is serving as a disincentive for people who are negligent and egregiously driving way above the speed limit. You respect the speed limit in Kenmore, Amherst, Tonawanda, Cheetawago, respect the speed limit in Buffalo. Thank you, Mister Chair.
Council member Scanlon?
Thank you, council president. Um, when this program first came to this council, I will be honest, I was completely in favor of the cameras being active during the school hours, the, the entire day. Then, earlier this year, when we voted on a quote-unquote compromise, uh, which would provide the opportunity for cameras to be on during those hours that I favored, I voted against it. And this is the reason why I could foresee this happening. If individual council members were gonna be given the ability to determine the duration of the camera activation in their individual districts, we were not going to have any semblance of uniformity across the city. Now, now, by doing this, having certain parts of the area, the cameras being activated, other areas not being activated, now I believe we open ourselves up to major criticism. How can we have it okay to drive a certain speed in one area of the city, you're under the same conditions, and it not in another area of the city? Um, I think we're gonna, again, open ourselves up to major criticism. I did receive a letter last weekend, an application from the schools to activate those cameras throughout the entire school district, the entire school day, excuse me, but, uh, I am going to deny it because, again, I can't in good conscience allow people that I represent drive through one portion of the city at a certain speed and have that be acceptable and not in another area of the city. Um, I, I think we're talking about inequity and things of that, that, things of that ilk. And I think that, um, not having it uniform across the city is just way off base. So, um, I can, if Dr. Crestis or the schools looking or public works, they can expect a letter from my office denying that application.
Alright, sir. Council member Wingo?
Thank you, Mister Chair. Uh, briefly, a response to council member Scanlon, I, I actually agree. I, 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 I really agree with what council member Scanlon just intimated regarding the inconsistency of the program with certain cameras being on in certain areas and certain cameras being off. But listen, let's, let's, this be real clear. Let's be very, very crystal clear. This was a compromise that the council members who, who, who voted for this compromise wanted. We, we voted for a compromise, and this is a compromise. I did not want the council members to have individual authority to say when a camera should be on or off. But because they gave it to me, I said, when we were presented with this compromise, that I would approve any, uh, request that, from any, uh, uh, school in, in, in Maston district for the cameras to be on all day. So, if you don't know where the borders of Maston are, you can find it on the city's website, it's, uh, buffalo n y dot gov. And you will be able to find where the borders of Maston are, and if a school is in Maston district, that school camera is on. Right now, it's performing arts, Bennett High School, and school sixty-one on Leroy and Greider. But again, the inconsistency with the cameras being on in certain areas and off in certain areas, I do agree with council member Scanlon. It will cause confusion, it will seem unfair, but at the same time, we allow folks to speed all the way up and through and down of the city of Buffalo with, with no repercussion. And now that we finally instituted a program that will punish lawbreakers from, 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 from endangering other people, now all of a sudden, we want to say that we're, we're, we're targeting folks, we're not targeting anyone. Drive the speed limit fifteen to twenty-five in a school zone, whereas there's a camera, and you won't get a ticket. If you drive more than fifteen in any school zone, and we're, Mister President, I do need to say this. Because, the supposed speed limit is fifteen miles an hour. It is fifteen miles an hour from seven A M. to six P M. in certain areas, from seven thirty to four thirty in other areas. The speed limit is that all throughout the entire day. The only time you'll get caught on a camera are those windows in certain areas, but in Maston, the entire day. So, you can get a ticket from a police officer all day. You can get a ticket from a police officer in any school zone, from the time that school is open to the time that school is closed. A police officer will give you a ticket and you will get points on your license. We need to understand the program before we criticize the program. But I do agree that there will be some inconsistencies and there will be, uh, I believe, some issues because of that. But I didn't ask for that. I didn't ask for it, Mister Chair.
Remember Golumbe?
Thank you, Mister President. Uh, you know, I, I voted against the compromise as well, pretty much for the same reasons that Mister Scanlon did. Uh, you know, I would like to see consistency in the city of Buffalo. I was talking to council member Farrelletto earlier today. And we were talking about, you know, if, uh, the north district, uh, uh, does all day and if all the rest of the districts do only, um, at drop-off and pickup, you know, how confusing that is going to be. Um, and that was, like I said, that was the main reason that I voted no on this compromise. Because I do want to see consistency so that people that are coming into the city of Buffalo will be treated the same way when they go down Military Road at Grabbyars and, uh, West Hurdle Academies. Um, when they go down Elmwood Avenue at McKinley, uh, and then the same thing when they're on, uh, Delaware Avenue in the Delaware district. Um, you know, I, 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 I just would like this to be consistent. I think that Mister Wingo makes an excellent point, and that is something that I've been, uh, uh, a little bit torn over. Is the idea that, okay, yep, okay, you have the cameras up in the morning, you have them up in the afternoon. But during that four or five hours in between, a police officer could give someone a ticket for speeding and much less than the twenty-six miles. They're going twenty-one, twenty-two, well, technically, if they're going sixteen, they could technically get a ticket, and it would be marks on their license, and it would be a bigger problem. Um, you know, it's, uh, I, I think this is a, a difficulty that, you know, uh, I would have left to the mayor's discretion and let him decide on whether it was gonna be all day or half day. That being said, I will most likely send a letter on Thursday, uh, with the majority of my colleagues and follow what they are doing with the morning and the afternoons, uh, for the cameras. But as council member Wingo said, you know, you still can get a ticket during the afternoon or in the late morning, uh, in that school zone. So, you know, people still need to be careful.
Um, council member Noah Kost.
Thank you, Mister Chair. I just wanted, just for, for clarity, that pursuant to the above legislation that we passed, the school district may request intermittent additional times for anticipated special events. That is the legislation that we passed. So, an application for all hours of the day is not congruent with the terminology of special events. It appears that the application is to evade the legislation that was passed by this body to make the cameras all day. I was, received two applications. They were for all day. I did not see anything that was for a special event, or for anything from a building principal that knows their building, and nobody knows, uh, a school building better than the, the principal, where they can identify those events that would need additional coverage and time for the cameras. I'm willing to have that dialogue with the principals in my district. So I just want to put that out there and to set the record straight, so that there's not confusion. Thank you, Mister Chair.
Thank you. Um, council member Wyatt?
Thank you, Mister President. Um, this program is plagued with lawsuits and a lot of distrust from the public. Each council member can do whatever they want, that's their district. We did compromise to something, but it wasn't a compromise. It was just a hijacking, as far as I'm concerned. We asked for cameras to be, we asked for cameras to be moved. We asked for signage to be more visible. We asked for beacons to be moved further out. As far as I know, in my district, none of those things happened. So it was a half-hearted effort that we should have just overturned to veto. Um, but, again, that's the type of relationship or type of gamiship that happens consistently in part of the disrespect that this council gets, because we represent our, our, our constituents. I have constituents on West Windspear that continue to complain that when they come off of there, their friends and family, they don't know where the school's on camera is. All they know is they come, when they make a left, and there they are. But we asked for signage and all those things. So, when we talk about this program, in the fairness of how it's been administered, I don't know what you're looking at. Maybe you're blind, maybe you can't see, because it hasn't been administered fairly. I think that any law that we put in place, when it's administered fairly, is fair. But we know that this has not been administered fairly. There are kids that do not walk to school. There are parents who drop their children off, not on Bailey, on East Amherst and on Westminster. So it's not on Bailey. So what Mister Rizzo put forth about how it targets, and I was not looking at the safety of children and the accidents they talked about, it really was about a traffic count. And I was not looking at the safety of children and the accidents they talked about. It really was about a traffic count. And we missed those things. And it's almost like what happened today. We presented something at the last minute without all the information, but you want to move forward with it and you want to talk to me about vision. Well, the vision for me is to protect the residents who I represent in the city of Buffalo in the most fair and honest way with integrity. If this really was about the safety of children, we would have had crosswalks, we'd have speed humps. But I've been asking for those things for the last four years. And so we go to a measure. That makes poor people harms them more dramatically than ever before. And so if we really are talking about the safety of children, we can do it in a non-punitive way. We can put speed humps. And we can do the things that we've asked for, this council has asked for, the majority of us has asked for over a period of time. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilmember Wingo.
Mr. Chair, uh, re- real quick. To suggest that this compromise was not a compromise and that it was hijacked, to me is preposterous. Because Mr. Wyatt wrote the compromise. If he wrote the compromise, then he should have put in there what he wanted for all of us. He wrote in the authority for each individual council member to get the power, to have the power. See the cameras on or off for extended times or not. I approved all of them. So to suggest that this was hijacked is ridiculous to me. As well as the 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 uh just as the the city declares that this program is for the safety of students. I believe that this will make students safer. There are students going to school, walking to school, being dropped off to school all during the day. I don't think I'm the only council member that spent time in the classroom. I think you did too, Council President, who spent time in a classroom in a Buffalo public school. So this is not just anecdotal data. This is first person, real life experience that I'm talking about. I took my students from the school across the street to some green space. I took my students down the street to learn more about the community that they live in. I did that. So the program that the city introduced. To ensure that some of the money that was used for uh received from this program is used. To make sure that we have safe markings on the street, to make sure that we do have other traffic calming measures in place. Is in place right now. That program, the mayor announced it. I saw that, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Um at the compromise, um just to be clear, was written by. Uh several, not uh just Mr. Wyatt, but um I agree that this is going to be chaotic. I said it also. I did vote for it to be all day. I mean, not all day. Excuse me, please scratch that. I voted for the mornings and for the app for the evenings. That was vetoed. In the meantime, there was this compromise worked out. Several people voted against it. It is what is in front of us. At the end of the day, um so that the public knows, we did it. I think every council member who has cameras got a request for all day. I agree with Councilmember Noah Kowski. The compromise was not so that the process could be circumvented for all day. Or else we 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 at that point had the votes to to override the veto. We were trying to be cooperative and work with the administration so that. Everybody got a little of something, were able to protect children. The reason I voted for the compromise was because, and I've said this before, if one of our schools is having a field day. And all of the children are outside, I'm going to approve that request for that day. To ask for all day, um uh I'm I'm not approving the one at. Public School Thirty-two, Bennett Park, Montessori, on Clinton. I'm not going to approve all day for McCowsky at Jefferson Invest. And I'm not going to approve Duville Porter uh school. And only because, as it was said, this was supposed to be for special events. I didn't receive a request for one special event. Um and so I want to stay true to the reason that compromise is there. Now, the alternative uh council members is that if we feel that this is not going to work out. And I think it's going to be horrible. I think the question that is asked, if you turn out of one district and if the school isn't another. Is going to be to the detriment of people driving because people are going to be confused. If I'm in Eloquent, it's only on during dismissal and arrival. If I'm in another district, it's on, I think it's going to get confused. So that I, I mean, the council always has the opportunity to put forth closing the program down and restarting. Or putting back forth the resolution for all day. And I mean, for mornings uh and for evenings, we have that that ability. So I want to want to just make sure you you remember that. So we'll wait to see. Uh well, I mean, this item is for, you said receiving file, Councilmember Wyatt. So this item is for receive and file. I think there's another item coming up. Um hopefully, we don't have to revisit. I think everything has been said. Um on this item that might have been talked about on the other. But uh I want to be clear also that if you in Eloquent and and I agree, you can get a ticket by a police officer. So watch the speed limit. What I don't want you to get is a ticket by a mechanical. Machine that is set up uh all day long. Alright, hearing nothing more on that. Motion. Okay, got you. Um so then motion is to receive and I mean, receive and file second by Councilmember Wyatt.
Item number thirty-seven, school speeds on cameras.
Motion to send the CD.
No, no, actually, the motion is not to send the CD. Um if I could just read this uh from a constituent, Mr. President, I would appreciate it and we can receive and file it. Thank, thank you, thank you, Mr. President. The letter from the constituent says, good evening, Professor Wingo. As you know, I have mentioned my concerns about the cameras. She's referring to in-class discussion. As a parent at Westminster Charter School, I have witnessed several unsafe incidents. I watched a report on Channel Two News today at the six PM broadcast. I listened to another councilman from the University District stating that there is no need for cameras on Bailey Avenue. As there is no physical school except the daycare preschool. First, that is a false statement. Westminster has been open almost the entire school year. Second, even with crossing guards, people still speed there. I have nearly been hit crossing at Bailey and Kizington, Bailey and Westminster. And Bailey and Amherst. People do not pay attention and disregard the stoplights as well. I have also witnessed the crossing guard almost get hit. In some ways, I can see where people may think that it is more about the money for the city. But as a parent, it is all about my child and every child being safe. I appeal to the council members to really think about how this program does work. As the weather gets warmer, the dangers increase. Thank you for your time on this. Uh Mr. Chair, as as some of you may know, I do teach at a couple colleges. And uh of course, naturally with me being a council member, uh a lot of my students, and this happens to be in a political science course. They want to talk about public administration issues, of which, of course, this is one of those. And uh this particular student wanted to send this letter in, but did not know exactly how. To go about ensuring that her voice would be heard. So to have, to keep from her having to come uh online. Uh I read her letter on her behalf. So we can now uh Mr. Majority Leader, a motion to receive. And file now that her letter has been read. Thank you, Mr. President.
Motion to receive and file.
Do you unmute, Mr. President? Um second by Councilmember Wingo.
Item number thirty-eight, zoning map amendment, multiple addresses on Marilla, multiple addresses on Hopkins for Buffalo Railroad South and five-five-eight Tiff.
Motion to send legislation and city planning board.
Second by Councilmember Scanlon.
Item number thirty-nine, uh speeds on camera schedules.
The motion to receive and file. Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to speak briefly on this.
Absolutely. Second by Councilmember Wyatt.
And they, um they have put a request to my office for speeds on cameras for Quarter Avenue Da Vinci. Um I denied them, or I I asked my staff to send a denial. And I just want to explain for the record. If you're going to send a request to our office regarding speed zone cameras. Or if you are holding a special event or you have multiple campuses, you have to state. Um the the hours that the cameras are going to be on. You can't just put one of the cameras on all day. If you're going to do that, we're just going to deny and we're going to receive and file. And I want them to understand that if you do send it to us, it's not going to be voted on by this full council. It's up to discretion of each individual council member according to the legislation that we pass. So this item are always going to be received and filed. There's not going to be a point where it's going to come before the full council for a vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Bowman.
I just want to state for the record as well, um I received a request for Public School sixty-nine and Clinton in my district and Lovejoy District. And I also uh uh sent a letter back denying the request as I negotiated in good faith. Um originally, when uh I wanted the hours for pickup and drop off, so just so the residents know, uh it'll stay the same as it has been. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Alright, uh next item.
Item number forty, uh PS one fifty-six Olmstead, March eleven requesters, school speeds on schedule change.
Motion to receive and file.
Second by Councilmember Wyatt.
Submissions list, civil service, item number one, appoint equipment operator.
Motion is to receive and file. I can't see item number one. What is that? Scroll down, please. Motion is to receive uh items one through and including. Twelve.
Second by Councilmember Wyatt.
Community development, item thirteen, report of sale eighty-nine Doris.
Uh this item can be approved. Second by Councilmember Bowman.
Councilmember Bowman.
Yes.
Councilmember Fariletto.
Yes.
Councilmember Gullman.
Yes.
Councilmember Noakowski.
Yes.
Council President Pridgen.
Yes.
Councilmember Rivera.
Yes.
Councilmember Scanlon.
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo.
Yes.
Councilmember Wyatt.
Yes.
Item number fourteen, information on COVID.
Uh this item can be received and filed.
Second by Councilmember Wingo.
Legislation, item number fifteen, food store license thirteen forty-five East Delvin.
Motion is to approve items fifteen and sixteen.
Second by Councilmember Bowman.
Councilmember Bowman.
Yes.
Councilmember Fariletto.
Yes.
Councilmember Gullman.
Yes.
Councilmember Noakowski.
Yes.
Council President Pridgen.
Yes.
Councilmember Rivera.
Yes.
Councilmember Scanlon.
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo.
Yes.
Councilmember Wyatt.
Yes.
Item number seventeen, special use permit, six eighty-two Abbott.
Motion is to recommit.
Second by Council uh member Scanlon.
Item number eighteen, special use permit, five and seventeen Walden, eleven thirty-seven and eleven forty-one Genesee.
Motion is to approve with conditions, item eighteen, and approve items nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three.
Mr. Chair, I read the conditions into the record, please.
Yes, you may.
The uh recommendations that I'm putting forward to put into the conditions are hours of operation to be. Eight AM to six PM, Monday through Saturday, with the exceptions for special events like the Juneteenth, Time Grill and others. Appropriate location signage. Signage must be approved by the district council member. Sunset clause needs an annual review and subject to change per block club request. Must have appropriate storage for vendors on the premises. Must have buy-in from the community regarding the conditions pending any uh changes by the block club. No sale of alcohol, tobacco on the property. Must maintain zero property code violations, proper vendor setup and breakdown daily. And last, but including, the district council member reserves the right to modify said conditions for annual review. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Uh second by Councilmember Noah Kowski.
Item number twenty-four, opposition to twenty dash five four three preservation ordinance amendment.
Um did we do, we need a roll call on the last?
Ah, my apologies. Councilmember Bowman.
Yes.
Councilmember Fariletto.
Yes.
Councilmember Gullman.
Yes.
Councilmember Noakowski.
Yes.
Council President Pridgen.
Yes.
Councilmember Rivera.
Yes.
Councilmember Scanlon.
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo.
Yes.
Councilmember Wyatt.
Yes.
Item twenty-four, opposition to twenty dash five four three preservation ordinance amendment.
Motion to receive and file twenty-four and twenty-five.
Second by Councilmember Rivera.
Item number twenty-six, used car dealer, two sixty-four Amherst.
New approve twenty-six and twenty-seven.
Second by Councilmember Gullman.
Councilmember Wingo.
Yes.
Oh, remember Wingo?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um item number twenty-seven, uh that item uh will be approved with conditions uh which will be filed with a corporation council. To include a sunset after one year. Uh they cannot park on the sidewalk. They cannot load and or unload on the sidewalk. And any and all tires that are going to be sold must be on the uh on adequate uh racking. Uh for those uh tires and disposal of any tires need to be disposed of uh according to uh whichever laws. That regulate disposal of of tires. And 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 if there are any other um. Conditions uh that the president, I will have those filed with corporation council as well, but I want those those few uh read into the record. Thank you.
Councilmember Bowman.
Yes.
Councilmember Fariletto.
Yes.
Councilmember Gullman.
Yes.
Councilmember Noakowski.
Yes.
Council President Pridgen.
Yes.
Councilmember Rivera.
Yes.
Councilmember Scanlon.
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo.
Yes.
Councilmember Wyatt.
Yes.
Item number twenty-eight, New Yorkers Against Gun Violence Letters.
Motion to receive and file.
Second by the majority leader.
Resolutions, item number forty-one, inquiry into response time for AMR ambulance.
Motion to adopt remainder to legislation. Uh second by Councilmember Wyatt. On this item, um I've been informed and I've got several calls, but had a meeting today. Uh with some dates and times and uh response times of AMR. Um I know that they are required to file with this council um a report. It usually just comes up as percentages. Uh but what I heard today was rather disturbing in that we have police. Who are calling for AMR and especially in some mental health issue situations. But there also have been physical situations, a stabbing, I was told, in which the response time was very slow. And in one of the instances uh where police were there, they were standing down. They were, you know, doing all the things that we've asked for, calling for help from mental health specialists. The person was very, very aggressive. And they wanted, they needed AMR. Uh what I was told today, this is uh directly from from uh. From those who are out on on the streets um as police officers is that when they, when AMR finally came. That they came with outlights um that they just kind of casually showed up and and the chatter on the radio was. Uh saying how how desperate this situation was. The reason I rate late filed this so that we can get a response, we have had situations in this city. Um in in which it has been devastating, the results. And AMR, from what we have found, is about to be up for renewal. Or their contract is about to come right up back in front of us. Um so at the end of the day, I don't want to wait to the contract and I I want to have this conversation right now. So I'd encourage the public, if they have any situations uh in which there's been slow response time from the ambulance company. Uh that is contracted with the city of Buffalo, that you get in touch with your dis- district council member or get in touch with council. Uh, that is contracted with the City of Buffalo, that you get in touch with your dis- district council member, or get in touch with council staff. So that we have, uh, that in front of us. And if the, um, chairman of C D allows, it, it'll be discussed. I don't know how. Uh, lengthy, uh, C D is next week. But I think that this is something very important, and we need this information from A M R. Right away. And I don't want them to tell me it's gonna take three weeks. It's a keystroke. And that report, and I don't want percentages. Actual times that you got calls for the last year. And actual times of when you responded. And then we'll be able to, um, put it right next to these complaints and then. Uh, make our own analysis, uh, of the situation. So thank you for your support, and we will watch. Councilmember Wingo?
Mr. Chair, I really appreciate this resolution, and this is something that I have many to discuss as well. Uh, but I'm certainly glad that you brought this up, uh, and, and for, for this time, because there are, uh, some, some of the vehicles for A M R. Do not have proper navigation systems. And then they do not allow the drivers or the E M Ts. Or the paramedics to use their cell phones. And that's a problem. You send someone to a call, but don't tell them how to get there. And they don't have the computer system in their car to navigate them there. So I also, if, if we could, when they do, uh, uh, give us this report. Let us know how many of these vehicles don't have sufficient, uh, uh, technology to respond to these calls in a timely fashion. Again, this is not first person, but there were, it's just as well as you do, Mr. Chair. I have members of my church who are E M Ts, who were E M Ts, and the information they give me. Is disheartening, disconcerting, and disappointing. And it will cost somebody their life. Because they don't have the necessary tools to respond to life and or death situations, even if a person is in a mental crisis, decompensating. Or if someone is bleeding out. If they don't know how to get where they're going, or if they don't want to go where they're sent, those are problems. And again, too. I, I so appreciate the fact that you mentioned the percentages, because a lot of these reports are given to us with percentages that can be skewed. However, the data points as far as the numbers cannot, they will not lie. So again, Mr. Chair, I, 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 I don't mean to get emotional. Yes, I do. Uh, because these are calls that are necessary for people's lives. These people's lives hang the balance on whether or not A M R's. Uh, E M Ts and paramedics are prepared and have the technology to respond to certain calls. So I'm looking forward to this conversation. Thank you, Mr. Chair, very much.
Thank you. And we, you know, the firsthand part of it is that I had a woman, uh, on my step who was having. What appeared to be a mental, uh, issue. Uh, Buffalo Police did show up. They, they, they stood to the side. Several cars came. It took almost forty minutes, uh, and they kept calling. And off of the police radio, not just from a phone. And we're told that there was no car, with, there were no ambulance available. So I think that before we go into this next contract, uh, A M R needs to prove and, um. What they're doing, and I'm not, you know, we don't, we won't back down. So, thank you. Appreciate you. Next item?
Item number forty-two, uh, right to know law legislation.
Motion to approve, uh, remainder to legislation.
Yes, this is, I believe, an adopt.
No, you have it done as an approve.
It should be adopted.
It should be adopted. Uh, motion is to adopt remainder to legislation.
Uh, second by council member Wyatt. I'll talk real quick about this. Um, so this is asking corporation council. Uh, to, uh, write the right to know law legislation. Um, that is the legislation that has been. Already adopted, I believe, in Syracuse, uh, in which if a officer stops a, a, a person. And does not issue a ticket, i- there's no arrest. You, if it's a ticket, you already know the information. But this would require, uh, that each officer has a, for lack of a better term, business card. Uh, that would be given to the person, uh, when they let them go, so that the person knows who detained them. Um, it had, it is working, um, I, I've been told in Syracuse as well. And I, I want to make it clear, this isn't against police. It is so that you continue to build, uh, the trust in the community, um, that you know who the officers are in your community. You can contact them. Or if you were mistreated or feel mistreated, you know exactly who it is. Um, and that argument of the badge number and all of that, it's still, the badges should still be seen. Uh, doesn't take that away from badges being seen, names being seen, um, so that constituents are able to identify. Um, I, I want to see it on a positive note, um, where we build community, but also if there's a bad actor out there. A person is able to have accurate information to report. All right. Did, did I give you a second?
Yes.
Okay. Next item?
Uh, item number forty-three, ordinance amendment, chapter ninety-six, bonds and contracts.
Uh, motion, we, uh, on the previous one, uh, we still have to vote on that, but motion to approve items forty-two and forty-three.
Yeah. Motion to approve forty-two and forty-three, second by council member Scanlon.
Roll call. Forty, forty-two was an adopt. I apologize.
Okay, so forty-three is what we're approving. Yes. Roll call.
Uh, council member Bowman?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferrer Leto?
Yes.
Councilmember Gollambeck?
Yes.
Councilmember Noakowski?
Yes.
Council President Pridgen?
Yes.
Councilmember Rivera?
Yes.
Councilmember Scanlon?
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo?
Yes.
Councilmember Wyatt?
Yes.
I want to thank, uh, council members Scanlon and Wingo, and I think many of us joined this resolution, uh, yesterday. Um, which puts some teeth into, um, the fact that when people get contracts with the City of Buffalo, that they. Were required to have apprentice. This will go beyond just saying it. But also, uh, putting some teeth in it and being able to penalize them. So thank you all for that.
President?
Yeah, I'd like to be added as well, please.
Add council member Gollambeck. All right, next item?
Item number forty-four, uh, appointing first City of Buffalo poet laureate.
Motion to adopt items forty-four, forty-five, and forty-six.
Second by council member Wingo.
Item number forty-seven, uh, transfer of funds downtown ballpark.
Motion to approve items forty-seven through forty-nine.
Second by council member Rashid N C Y.
Councilmember Bowman?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferrer Leto?
Yes.
Councilmember Gollambeck?
Yes.
Councilmember Noakowski?
Yes.
Council President Pridgen?
Yes.
Councilmember Rivera?
Yes.
Councilmember Scanlon?
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo?
Yes.
Councilmember Wyatt?
Yes.
Right. But I'm sorry, council member Noakowski?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to remind everyone that every day is a good day to shop at the Broadway Market, but especially during the Easter season. Which commences this Saturday. So please come out to nine 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 Broadway and spend some money. And if you want to uplift. The east side, spend money on the east side, because we have a lot of wonderful vendors in the market that are not just there seasonally, but all year round. You can now get, uh, your butter lamb and get some biryani to eat for lunch there. So please come out, um, and patron the Broadway Market. Thank you.
Sir, council member Scanlon, that's where you're at?
Yeah, thank you, Council President. Um, I meant to do this during in memoriam, but it did slip my mind. I just wanted to ask everyone on the council and. Um, in the City of Buffalo to keep in their prayers, the family of the mayor who, whose father passed away, um, since our last meeting. Um, obviously, um, we all work with the mayor on a regular basis, um, and we're here working together for the betterment of the City of Buffalo. And I just hope that, um, he knows that all of us are in support of him and, um, his family during this difficult time.
Thank you for catching that. That was a good catch, um, because I think every council member on, on here in some way. Uh, sent a message or in some ways, but as a council, I think that that's very important to show their support in this difficult time. Thank you for that, Councilman Scanlon.
Uh, Sean, we have announcements, committee meetings?
Yeah, announcement of committee meetings. The following meetings are scheduled to be streamed live on W W W dot Facebook dot com forward slash B F L O C C. Committee on Civil Service, Tuesday, March twenty-third, twenty twenty-one at nine forty-five A M. Committee on Finance, following Civil Service, Tuesday, March twenty-third at ten A M. Committee on Legislation, Tuesday, March twenty-third at one P M. Committee on Community Development, Tuesday, March twenty-third at two P M.
Um, there was one announcement, Councilmember Scanlon, that Mark just said you forgot. What is tomorrow?
Not my birthday, so I don't care. No, tomorrow is Saint Patrick's Day, of course.
So we, we just want to make sure, because when it's Juneteenth, you know, we go, we, we gonna be talking about Juneteenth. So I just want to be fair. You know what I mean? Uh, great. Thank you, everybody.
Yeah, actually, Council President, yeah, you know, Saturday, we, um, we raised the, the Irish flag in Niagara Square and. One thing we did stress, you know, the parades are canceled, things of that nature, but it is an important time for a lot of businesses. Who rely heavily on, um, the retail portion of, um, of this, retail part of this year. So I encourage, um, everyone to get out. And celebrate responsibly. Um, you know, we mentioned places like the Irish Center and other places are doing, um, remote dance. Programs and things of that nature, where you can buy tickets. Um, there's other music venues offering traditional fare and music in a responsible manner. Socially distant. So if you have the opportunity, please get out and support these businesses again, who rely so heavily on this time of year.
You got it. Thank you, sir. Um, majority leader?
I think majority leader, uh. Nothing majority leader left.
Oh, did he? Okay. Um, President Protop, you want to?
Motion adjourned.
Uh, second by council member Gollambeck. We are adjourned. Thank you.